I'd like to call this March 27th, 2025 Board of Education Regular Meeting to Order. George, can you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Excused.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Stachek?
Excused.
And Mrs. Howson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. We could all stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda, we will be entering into executive session to...
Consider the employment of a public employee and to prepare for negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
We will be returning for public session at approximately 7:00 PM. We will enter into executive session at 6:20. Do I have a motion?
Go ahead.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bissell, second by Mr. Miko. George, can you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Howson?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, we're going to resume public session at 7:01 PM. Next on our agenda is our strategic priorities. Our district has developed and is currently engaged in a three-year strategic plan which reflects the values, beliefs, and hopes of our students, staff, parents, and community. There are four strategic priorities to the plan: transforming teaching and learning, aligning staff and resources, cultivating culture and climate, and leveraging funding and facilities. Our strategic priorities give actionable focus to our district's purpose and mission and guide the work of our strategic plan. Next, we have OSBA student achievement, and with Mrs. Kilbane and Ms. Stachek not being here, we are going to postpone that for future meeting. Next, we have public comment. We have no public comment slips. Is there anybody who would like to talk to the board? All right. There are none. Next, we have approval of minutes. Sorry? Okay. Approval of minutes, March 13th, 2025 Work Session Minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of the March 13th, 2025 Work Session. All audio recordings will be a permanent part of the minutes and are available upon request through the Treasurer's Office. Video recordings shall be maintained based on the availability of the selected digital online platform. Now, I'd like to turn it over to George for the Treasurer's Report.
Thank you, Mrs. Howson. I have a few items for your consideration tonight. First, starting with financial report for the month ending February 28th, 2025. It's the standard supplemental report and the monthly status report. Both are linked to the agenda. Kind of go over the supplemental report. Pull up in a larger scale. For February, year-to-date, total revenues are about $10.8 million less than last year. I'll get more into this when we get to the forecast part, but it's more to do with the property taxes and the timing of the advances. Even remember from last month, Januaries were lower as well. With the reevaluation, the county was a little late getting the tax bills out, but they didn't move the deadlines back. So that's what they contributed to. So the February advance was also half of what it was last year, which is why it's less. And then we did receive the March settlement in March. It's not part of this report, but the forecasted part is, so I'll get to that when we get to that section. Expenditures are about $3.7 million higher through February compared to last year, and our cash balance is about $9.2 million less compared to last year, which is primarily due to the difference in property taxes. Overall, revenues is trending $744,000 less to the forecast. Again, that's due to property taxes. We'll touch on when we get to that section. Expenditures are trending about $535,000 less than forecasted, so overall, a net impact of $200,000 unfavorable to the forecast. And then we're projected to finish the fiscal year with $46.9 million, $46.9 million, which is less than what we began with at 51.3. So we would project it out, the rest of the months come true, we would see a deficit spent for this year, that we would be spending down our cash balance. February versus February last year, local taxes, the advance was $18.3 million last year. This year was 8.3, so a difference of $9.9 million. State revenues is up about $90,000. All other revenues down by $38,000, which is primarily due to interest total. So as I stated, total revenues for the month compared to last month is $9.9 million less, and then total revenues on the bottom section is about $10.7 million less than compared to last year. Again, has to do with property taxes. And then expenditures. Expenditures for February compared to last February, they're about $560,000 higher. Salary and benefits has been higher each month. Purchase services for this month is higher compared to last February. And then if we go to the second chart, the year-to-date, salaries and benefits are about $3.7 million or $3.3 million higher than last year. Purchase services are about $757,000 through this timeline, higher than last year. And then all other expenses are about $390,000 less. That's primarily due as we had a debt payment last year. Last year was the final year. That debt payment, that was about $300,000. So that's why that primary difference is in the other expenses. So overall, expenses through this fiscal year are about $3.7 million higher, which is about 6.7% higher than this period last year. In comparison to the forecast, so revenue is trending about $744,000 less. We did get our March settlement. Our March settlement for property taxes was about $1.4 million less than forecasted for property taxes. Still trying to dig into it, but one of the things that... So for the school district, our fiscal year overlaps two calendar years. The second half tax collections for calendar year 2024 and the first half collections of 2025, while the county and other municipalities just look at it as a calendar year. So for us, for this first half of the fiscal year, we normally see of all the tax bills sent out for a collection split, we see 54% collected. This half, we saw 51% collected, so a 3% difference. So that 3% still trying to drill down on if it was just more of a timing issue of the same issue with the advances, or if it's a delinquency issue of people just not paying at all their property tax bills, whether it's residential and commercial, if there's an increase there. Did receive a delinquency report, which was higher than anticipated, but also it could also contribute to a timing. So we won't really know if the collection, the delinquency is higher until after the second half collections for the year, unfortunately, but it's something that to keep tabs on and kind of requesting that delinquency report from the county more frequently just to kind of identify that trend. So taxes for the fiscal year, this is our last collection, so for the fiscal year, it would be $1.4 million less, but a couple of good news. Homestead and rollback was $363,000 more. Still trying to dig into that as to why that is. Could it be more people were eligible based on the reevaluation and lower income? So digging into that, hopefully spend the next couple of weeks to try and drill down on that. And then the TIF revenue, that was about $350,000 more. So all in all, with all those variances, it kind of offset the decrease in property taxes, but overall, revenues is trending about $744,000 less than forecasted. So we still have four more months of the fiscal year, so continue to monitor each month and go from there. Any questions on that? Then expenditures, we're trending about $535,000 less. Salary and benefits is about $612,000. Again, we said some open positions. There's one position open, Earthfield, another one opens. So we saw some savings there and differences in healthcare as well. And then purchase services, because the taxes were less, our fee to the county auditors was less because of the percentage of taxes, so have some savings there. And then the election expense, we've talked about, time of the election, it was usually about $30,000. Because of the number of issues that were on the ballot, it was significantly less. I think drawing a blank offhand, it was either $3,000 or $8,000 for the past year, so saw some savings there. I'll get a more concrete number and just draw a blank offhand on that. And that concludes this report. Any questions on that? And then I do want to highlight on the financial status report, I did add a new sheet in here in the exhibit, in the appendix sections. For those that were here during the construction days when we had the bond issue, there was a page in here that monitored the spend down of the construction proceeds. Kind of created something similar for the '07, though, now that we're starting to appropriate funds for that. So it's page 15 of the PDF, and just to kind of show that, we had a beginning cash balance that we started the fiscal year of $25.6 million. We had estimated interest of $500,000. Good news is, we're already over that. So year-to-date, through February, we have $575,000 of interest. We've appropriated for two projects, the HVAC for Kinsner of $1.8 million, the HVAC project at Serrar of $159,000. So all in all, with those projects and the increase in interest, we're currently at $23.5 million. Any questions on that? All right, then moving on to the agenda, grant approvals. There were several grant approvals for this month. The first is the ODNR Step Outside Grant for Strongsville Middle School. If you recall about, let's say it's about 10 years ago, when we had both center and Albion, PE teacher Jeff Martinelli, who's still here, applied for an archery grant from ODNR, the Ohio Agricultural and Wildlife, to kind of get the program started. So each year after that, he's been applying for a grant for $500 to kind of replace some of the equipment, the bows and arrows, to continue that program at the middle school. We received three GPD Foundation Grants. Two of them were from the high school by Rachel Griffin for the Model Cafe, and then also Community-Based Instruction Life Skills. And then another by our tech director, Dave Binkley, for podcasting equipment. We had two SEF Grants, one at Whitney for more flexible seating, wobble chair. And then our athletic director, Denny Ziegler, applied for Athletic Administrator Certification Program, which is granted from their, from SEF's Radmacher Miller, Radmacher Miller Grant that supports athletics. And then our media specialist at the middle school applied for a library service and technology grant for books that would, for $1,979. And then moving on to item three, new funds. Do need to create a new fund for the library grant because it is a federal miscellaneous grant, so need to account for that. We're appropriately under that fund. Student Activity Program Revision for Serrar Elementary Student Council, increasing their budget for 500, from 500 to 2,000, and this was based for a fundraiser that they did for the LLS. Item five, appropriation adjustments, which is based on the grant approvals and the student activity adjustment. And then item six, be resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer that in accordance with ORC after the fact invoices, the Board approves the following invoice for payment, and the Treasurer be authorized to sign the fiscal certificate. We have for Warren Roofing, we had an emergency repair for this building where it was leaking. Operations manager Steve Brechner needed to get them in here as soon as possible to patch the repairs. The invoice was dated for, or the services were 10/28. We were able to get a purchase order in on March 5th, and the amount, which is over the threshold of $3,000, was $3,250, which is why it requires Board approval. And then lastly, at the organizational meeting, you authorized me on your behalf to do the public records training on your behalf. As an elected official, required to do it once every four years. Since it's been moved online, I've just been doing it yearly just to keep up with it. This is to acknowledge that I did it on your behalf. So, yeah. And then that concludes my report. If there's any questions?
Any questions for George? Thanks, George. We appreciate that you continue to do that training for us. All right, next, I'll turn it over to Dr. Iba.
Thank you, Mrs. Howson. Before we can start with my report, we want to, first of all, say thank you to our, all of our staff and administrators and teachers and all the team that put on an outstanding state-of-the-schools Model Mustang experience yesterday. It was just amazing to get around and see. So, you know, Jenny was a part of the team that led that, so if you want to share any thoughts or comments about the event yesterday.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think it was more than I imagined that it was going to be, so I am just really excited to have all the students there, number one. The way that they just were able to articulate what they are learning in our classrooms and their excitement and passion from our preschool students who were on the ground building Legos, and they actually had two different areas there for preschool. And to just see how a student in our district can apply the, learn the knowledge that they need to learn, but also apply the skills that we want them to embody from pre-K all the way through 12, as our Model Mustang competencies kind of dictate, it was just really, really exciting. And I think the parents of the students that were there as well, they just kept staring at their child like, wow, I couldn't, I didn't know they could say all this, and they were learning all this. So I think it, just the shared experience with our staff, our students, and our community, I think it went over very well. And just thanks to everybody who participated. It was a lot of work went into it, a lot of help, a lot of different people took on a lot of different things, so I think that's what made it successful. True collaboration.
Yeah. No, it was a great project, and, you know, one of the things that you always wish is people could see what's happening inside of our schools every day. And so that was the best glimpse we could give, is to see that. And it'll go out tomorrow, but Scott took a whole bunch of video in the 60 seconds tomorrow, which is never 60 seconds, it'll be about five minutes. Highlights a lot of the stations, our stations and centers that were there. So even if you didn't get a chance to attend, you can get a flavor of what it was like, because we're excited to see what next year is going to bring with the event, so.
Last week, I think it was 60 seconds. That's pretty close.
Right, sure. Yeah, that's right. It was close. So with that, one of the things that was a part of it was not only people could go around and give some feedback as to what we were doing, but there was a scavenger hunt of getting to different Model Mustang competencies, and if they went through that, they were able to put their name into a bucket and win one of two prizes, which thank you to our wonderful partners at the mall for donating these gift cards, so somebody can go to the mall and have a, have a pretty cool experience. So are you going to draw them?
No, you.
Okay.
Shake them up.
All right, two winners?
Two winners. Don't look.
All right. Our first winner of one of these baskets is a student from the middle school, Andy Templata. So Andy, we will get this to you when you get back from, probably when you get back from spring break, or maybe tomorrow.
Yeah.
At the middle school. So congratulations, Andy, for basket number one. Basket number two. Oh, there's a lot of middle school. Also, from middle school is Niall DePatti. So we will get that to Niall tomorrow, or tomorrow or after spring break at the middle school. So congratulations to both of those students and all that they won. So just again, wonderful job highlighting our school district, and appreciate all of the board members here for taking another evening out of their schedule to be there, and also some of our wonderful community members that showed up to be a part of it as well. So with that, any other comments?
May I?
Oh, go ahead, Rich.
I just, I just wanted to publicly thank Cameron, Jenny, and everyone. You didn't describe it well enough how lovely the event was, and how this, our students are our best ambassadors. But with, you know, I arrived a little late, so shame on me, but I learned about Terracotta Soldiers from two very young elementary school students. I learned about AP Chemistry and AP Modern European History. I learned about green screens. They tried to trick me and get me in front of a green screen, but I did not fall for it. But I learned about the students doing their video updates, the daily video update every day. I learned about our Registrar Rally, and I didn't know registration was that exciting, but now I know it's that exciting. I learned about Career Connections and what we're doing at the middle school. I learned about an Iditarod Race, and I learned about a young man who wants to be in the Iditarod Race one year, because you get prize money, and that was very attractive to him. I had a, I had a chance to talk to a young teacher who's only been with us for two years and is all excited about restorative practices and leads a book club amongst her teachers. So as far as the public is concerned, they should all be very proud of our students. I know I was, and I think the one thing that was fun was, and it is my thing, I always like to tell the students how proud I am of them when they do well, and one of the students asked me if I was the superintendent.
Ooh.
Because I shook his hand and I had a sport coat on. And I said, no, when I grow up, I hope to be the superintendent one day, because now all I, I now know all you need to do to be superintendent is shake hands and wear a sport coat. But honestly, from my, from my feedback as a board member, it was an excellent event, and congratulations to everyone involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to say the same, like, I loved walking and seeing the preschoolers on the floor, and then walking around and ending with the AP Research, you know, kids. Like, I was just blown away. And Rich, I didn't write down everything that I learned. The biggest, my biggest standout was the Black Mamba Snake can kill me in less than a minute and 20 seconds, so I will not be traveling to Africa. I'll be avoiding the Black Mamba. But, yeah, everything was just wonderful. You know, when I got there at 6, I wasn't sure what to expect. Looked down at my watch, and it was 7:40 all of a sudden, like, it was, it just drew you in. So I just don't know where, it's going to want to grow. Like, everyone's going to hear about it, and they're all, more people are going to want to come, so be prepared to bust out of that gym.
Yeah.
Can I just share one thing from the parent perspective? I had three kids that participated in some fashion last night, and when you have four kids and their interests are varying, it's very difficult to get them all in the car at once agreeably. Yesterday, all three of them ran out to the car because they were so excited to be able to participate. There was no complaining, there was none, no can we go homes, it was let's do this, let's show what we got. And as a parent, that was so encouraging. So I was, it was great for the kids to be able to have a chance to showcase what they can do.
You know, just to add on one more thing, you know, all the things that are happening in our district, you know, and all the things that you said are great examples, and we, it's great to celebrate what's, what's going on. And one of our partners was there, which is Polaris, and highlighting the great support they've given to bring programs to our building that wouldn't be there otherwise. And so I got to talk to the pre-engine, I got to talk to a lot of them, but the pre-engineering track, and to see that there was a group of three young men that, that were talking about one of the things that they've developed. But they have, they worked at Infineum, is it Infineum Walls? Yeah, Infineum Walls. And so they worked there, and they were explaining about how they have to put this filament in a track of which the glass sits in, and you have to do it by hand, and obviously it's a lot of labor, it takes a lot of time. These kids have developed a mechanical system that they built and created to mechanically feed that filament into the track, and now they're at the process of coding it to determine how long, the speed, all of that stuff. So to have Polaris bring those classes to us, to have a company that they work with, Infineum Walls, say, hey, go do your thing, and for these kids to 3D print and build a machine that is actually doing that, was pretty impressive. It was pretty impressive, so good things. So going on to the agenda, the first item specifically under my agenda is the academic calendar for the '25-'26 school year. There's a revision for the Board to consider. This is unfortunate. We never like to make a mistake in the counts of our calendars, but luckily, this mistake was found recently, as you may, as the Board knows, but just for everybody's knowledge, we put together committee. The committee has three teachers, three support staff, three administrators, three parents, and we create calendars and recommend them. We have, there's a lot of stuff we have to count and keep track of, and unfortunately, in April, there were two days that were added that were not in April. We said we had 18 days in April that were school days, we only had 16. So we had to figure out one, some way to, what are we going to do with these two days? We need to put them in. Decreasing winter break, decreasing spring break, adding on in June, those are not all great options, so the best option we had was to start school two days earlier. So what that means as compared to what was previously approved by the Board is that staff was slated to, and specifically, teachers were slated to start on Thursday, they will now start on Tuesday. Students were, so when I say students, I'm talking about first through ninth grade. There's a tiered system that we have to bring students in. They were slated to start on Wednesday, they were, they're now going to start on Monday. So we know this is an inconvenience. We apologize for any challenges this is causing, or this may cause, but as soon as we found the mistake, it's five months before the calendar goes into effect, we shared it with you. So that's the one correction. The other correction, as you know, we moved commencement this year to not be on the Sunday prior to Memorial Day. We moved it to the Thursday prior to Memorial Day weekend. Since we're updating the calendar, that's in there as well as moving commencement to the Thursday before Memorial Day weekend. Any questions on that? So with that, I'm going to move to Agenda Item Two, and I'm going to ask, Steve, are you coming up, or is Mike just doing it? All right, so as a representative of our Facilities Development Committee, I'm going to ask Mike Caldwell to come to the podium to share their report.
Mike, the clicker's up. Oh, you got it.
I got it. Yep. Thank you, Dr. Iba. Thank you, Mrs. Pelco, Mr. Anagostu, and the board members for this opportunity to share an update with you. So first off, as a reminder for the community, this committee was commissioned in partnership with the district administration to develop and maintain a long-term strategic plan focused on the district buildings and facilities, including capital investments for improvements, all to support the standard of education that we desire for the children, including safety and security. So just hearing some of what you related with the Model Mustang program, that's, this is, we need these kind of facilities to support educational experiences like that. One of our mandates is to be fiscally responsible and keep the long term in mind, make sure we're maximizing our investments, and certainly transparency is important. So we hold quarterly meetings, those are open to the public, there's information on the website for anyone to, if they're interested. And personally, I'd say I've been on the committee over five years now, have a much better understanding of how the administration works, how the district works, everything including the processes, the challenges, the funding, state regulations, so on. And one thing I can say is the district does very well, which is kudos to all of you, including Mr. Brechner, for all the work that's done on a regular basis, so thank you for all of your hard work. So in collaboration with Mr. Brechner, we continue to discuss and... So in collaboration with Mr. Brechner, we continue to discuss a number of things, and these considerations are at the forefront at the moment. So first, we have a number of capital needs, capital improvement needs to maintain our district assets. In light of, you know, potential building projects that we've discussed in the past, we were trying to be very mindful of the long-term investments that we were making, and try to really stretch, stretch our dollars and put them into the best ways possible. And in this consideration, knowing that we don't have construction immediately imminent, there's a number of things that we need to turn around and address. And so we'll talk about a few of those here in a moment. But everything from maintenance on existing facilities, that's obviously required on a regular basis, including things like roofs and other systems and mechanicals. One of the things that we continue to deal with, along with you, is the capacity constraints that we have across our district. And we commissioned an enrollment study a few years ago, and we're seeing some of those same predictions come true as far as the increased enrollment that was predicted. And so that continues to cause some of our operational challenges in the use of our facilities. As you know, we have the temporary trailers in place, which then creates ongoing maintenance concerns that need to be addressed as well. We do this in collaboration as well with the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, so keeping those regulations and requirements in place. And again, as these buildings continue to age, renovations to some of these things become less and less realistic and more and more expensive as we go forward. I wanted to mention as well, within this particular building, for the administration building, there are a number of challenges that we are dealing with, including structural integrity. And so that's something that we'll need to, that we've had a lot of discussions on in our recent, recent meetings. And lastly, we continue to focus on the functionality of the buildings, that it's meeting what we need to from an educational standpoint, supporting, you know, modern layouts, the educational needs, along with, again, safety and security. So a number of things continue to be facts as we move forward. So as I mentioned, the cost of the ongoing capital improvements continues to increase as we go forward. These are aging assets, especially some of our elementary buildings that are more than 50 years old. And so the cost of updating them continues to increase, especially as we try to maintain the codes and requirements that the state puts forward. It's increasingly more difficult to maintain that. I mentioned the demographic study earlier, and again, all of these things combined, this committee still supports a long-term plan of building projects to replace some of our elementary buildings. And so we'll continue to work on establishing a timeline as we go forward, as we get clarity on the necessary funding to do that. So from a recommendation standpoint, for this upcoming summer, we recommend pursuing capital improvement projects specifically for the Chapman and Whitney Elementary Buildings to replace the roofs. This will extend the life of those buildings, at least for the foreseeable future. And this was something that we tried to balance this investment as best we could, knowing that it doesn't solve it for the long term beyond, you know, a certain period of time. But it's become immediately necessary that we need to focus on that. And then again, as I mentioned, for this particular building with some of the structural integrity concerns, we recommend that we need to start exploring an alternate location for the administrative offices. And so there's a number of things that the committee is looking at, along with Mr. Brechner, for that. Last thing I'll say, and then we can jump back for any questions. I just want to recognize the committee as well. Thank them for their time. It's a volunteer, volunteer committee, so I appreciate all of their time representing the community, lending their expertise and knowledge and support to the administration. So thank you to all of those committee members. Any questions for our recommendation?
I don't have any question. I just want to thank you again. Laura and I serve as the board liaisons to the Facility Development Committee. You are correct, it's an unpaid position, so we appreciate everything you do, and just wanted to give a shout out that it's vastly helpful to the board to have the community input vetting these issues and making sure that one of our priorities is maintenance of our facilities. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Just ditto. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thank you. With that, that concludes my report, and I'll turn it over to Steve for the Business
Good evening, everyone. I have a couple of items in this section for your consideration tonight. The first one is the agreement that we would have between ourselves and the Ohio Schools Council called the Power for Schools. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves the resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of master electric energy sales agreement between the district and Power for Schools endorsed electric supplier, it's E-I, or ENGIE Resources LLC. And it's in the exhibit. The agreement was brokered by the Ohio Schools Council.
This is an action item, so we need a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bissell, second by Mr. Miko. Any discussion? Steve, do you want to explain what we are agreeing to?
Sure. So with our partnership with the Ohio Schools Council, like many aspects of that partnership, this is one of the benefits that we have, that we are one of many Northeast Ohio schools, and I'll amend that by saying schools in Ohio, that have joined this program. What this allows the Ohio Schools Council to do is go out and broker energy deals that are better than what we could accomplish individually. There's a lot of, if you've ever looked at your energy bills or any of your utility bills, there's always line items that are somewhat of a mystery. And it seems like those line items are changing and everything. And this just allows the knowledge of the Ohio Schools Council to work for us, so that we don't have to broker these deals on our own, and avoid some of the pitfalls that come with a nice upfront rate, but then as the market changes, that rate changes as well. So this offers us not only better buying power in the outset, but also more stability in markets that are, at times, unstable as we move forward.
Thank you. Any questions for Steve? George, can you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housel?
Yes. Motion carries.
The second item in this section, and I'll have a cameo appearance by the athletic director, Denny Ziegler, in case there's any questions. So this is a resolution to approve the contract with BSN Sports LLC for the purchase and supply of Under Armour apparel and footwear, along with any and all other equipment and apparel offered by sale, for sale by BSN for use by the school and its athletic programs. And the attachment is that contract.
Also an actionable item. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bissell, second by Mr. Miko. All right. Denny, do you want to explain?
Sure.
What we're wrote again.
So, so everyone knows, BSN handles about 95% of all high school athletic equipment. Almost all schools use them for, if it's soccer goals, if it's soccer nets, if it's, you know, backboard padding, if it's football equipment, shoulder pads, dial markers, you know, so whatever the case may be. So they offer a pretty extensive deal for schools to use them. So this contract would not only mean that we use them as a primary, they are willing to match pricing for any other vendor that we would go for. And this contract in particular reaches out for the, for UA or for Under Armour apparel. So as you can see there, we did a study between Under Armour, Nike, Adidas, who they carry. We also reached out to other vendors. They might only carry one of those brands, or some of them don't even carry other brands. So this deal allows our teams to be in that gear. It gives us the highest percentage of cost when we go to purchase, and then also all the rewards that we get back from them, we can use for our athletes. So for instance, this year, we got about 3,000 T-shirts from Under Armour that we could give out to students at games for different events that we do. So this, so this contract allows us to do that moving forward.
And it's a five-year contract, is it?
It is a three-year contract.
Three-year, thank you.
Well, they would like five. Is it five? I might be mistaken. It might be five.
I thought I saw.
At least the paperwork says five, but it's renewable, one-year contracts.
Correct.
Okay.
You're correct.
And you had some.
And this would allow all of our teams on their four-year uniform cycle to all get new uniforms once a year if they're in the high school.
And you had some of the uniforms on display last night. That was nice to see.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Denny? All right. Here, George, can you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housel?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Denny.
Do you have a question?
Okay.
Thank you.
And the last item in this section is the purchase of some speakers and amplifiers for Paquetan Stadium, be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education accepts a quote from Studio Mind to upgrade the speaker system at Paquetan Stadium to improve sound coverage and clarity. The total quote for equipment and installation should not exceed $41,638, and those quotes are attached.
Steve, do you want to explain what we're doing?
So it's my understanding with this quote, and from talking to Mr. Binkley, we're going to be adding three pairs of speakers, so six speakers total. There will be four located on the home side, two on the visitor's side, with some corresponding amplifiers to improve the sound system that's currently there. What's there, we've noticed, not just game nights, but also at events that we've had, including commencement, the sound gets a bit muddled as it's in the open. This is our, through consulting with different vendors, this is what is felt to be the best solution for that issue, so that we cannot have that happen any longer.
All right. Any questions?
I was just going to say that Steve, Dave, and I, and George spoke about the speakers earlier, and I'm comfortable that we did our diligence to get the best possible price. We had two quotes. And then I was going to say that in conversation with George, we need to make sure that BWC insurance coverage and any other appropriate coverage that this vendor has in place. But I was going to, if the board is willing, I think we should just make that part of our language in all of our contracts on the, on the agenda that have vendors doing the install work that BWC and any other appropriate insurance has always required that, you know, not just have it, but you need to provide us the certificates.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Any other questions for Steve? All right. Thank you, Steve. Next, we'll move to the Human Resource Report with Ryan.
Good evening, everyone. I have the following items in Human Resources for your consideration. Item one, resignation, non-certificated. Item two, retirements, certificated. Item three, retirement, non-certificated. Item four, appointment, certificated. Item five, appointment, non-certificated. Item six, appointment, home instruction tutor. Item seven, appointments, certificated substitutes. Item eight, appointments, non-certificated substitutes. Item nine, appointments, certificated athletic supplemental contracts. Item ten, appointments, non-certificated athletic supplemental contracts. Item eleven, change in status, non-certificated. Item twelve, contract recommendations, non-certificated. Item thirteen, leaves of absence, certificated. Item fourteen, leaves of absence, non-certificated. Item fifteen, unpaid leave, certificated. Item sixteen, unpaid leave, non-certificated. Item seventeen, volunteers, chaperones. Item eighteen is a revision, and item nineteen is a revision. Any questions?
Kyle Morgan is listed twice. I'm sure there's a good reason.
Wonder which number? Did he move twice? It looks like he moved twice.
He moved twice, yes. I was reading it.
There's the dates. Now it makes sense.
Yes, he moved twice. Yeah, he moved twice. Yep. Any other questions? That was a good one.
Thanks, Ryan.
All right.
Under the technology report, we have one item for your consideration. As you may know, we buy Chromebooks for our students. All of our students have Chromebooks. We buy new ones for students in third grade, and then we buy new ones for students in eighth grade. And so this is the annual purchase to buy the Chromebooks for our students, as well as other replacements. So the recommendation is to purchase 1,200 Chromebooks and Google Management license for student use, and those 1,200 will come from the general fund. And an additional 200 Chromebooks to replace damaged or destroyed student Chromebooks, that will come from the self-insurance fund. So as you know, parents have the option to pay for insurance. We use those for the repairs and replacements. So the total quoted cost for all 1,400 Chromebooks will be $402,114, and you can see the breakdown between the two funds. Any questions on this purchase?
I do have a question. I don't need the answer now, but.
Thank you.
Especially since Dave is here. At some point, someone mentioned possibly changing the year when we get the students a new Chromebook. Is that still on the table?
This is the change.
This is the change.
Yeah, so Google, Google, or Chromebooks change their, Rich, you would probably know better than I, but basically, they'll continue to support Chromebooks for five years and refresh them. And so that's where it changed. It used to be ninth grade would get a new Chromebook, and there was, I think, in the middle school somewhere. So that's where it already changed to three and eight.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to give a shout out. I know people are surprised, but Dave and I talked about the Chromebooks, and I just wanted to compliment him. If you dig into the, into the quote, the two models, there's a $4 difference. There's a slight difference in capability. And I challenged him, I'm like, "For $4, let's just get the extra RAM and the extra space." And, you know, we discussed it, and he's like, "Those Chromebooks are for the younger kids, and even though it's only $4, they're not going to use the additional RAM or the additional space. So the $3,200 we can allocate somewhere else." So I was particularly impressed, and I thank him publicly for his diligence.
If there's no questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you. We will move on to report on Polaris. Michelle?
As usual, there's lots going on to report from Polaris, and this is hot off the presses. We were just notified of this award today. But the, we have a Business Advisory Council here in Strongsville, but Polaris also hosts one that services all six of the associate districts. So that Business Advisory Council is one of nine recipients in the state of Ohio this year of a four-star rating for the Business Education Leader Awards for Excellent Business Advisory Councils. So very few are receiving this, and Polaris will be honored with this this year. So congratulations to Diane and her team there for their hard work serving our districts. Also, thank you to those from Polaris who were in attendance last night. They brought along all kinds of things that we could touch and see and learn about. One of them was a robot from their Mad Grab program at Polaris Palooza, so on March 14th at Polaris. Strongsville did well again. I don't remember the exact order, but we, one of our teams did win the Mad Grab, which was exciting. And then we took, there are six positions they award total. Over two categories, we took three out of the six. So again, a fantastic showing for Strongsville. Congratulations to those students, and I do believe some of them were featured on the news. So that was a lot of fun for those students. We have some upcoming events. Camp Discovery, if you have a rising sixth through eighth grader, registration is open, and some of those classes fill up really quickly. I believe there's something like 19 choices of things you can do, and they've added new options and switched up. and they've added new options and switched up some other ones. So I know my kids are very excited about the making bread class that's taking place this year. So that's new. They're also going to make, if you've seen the giant Connect Four yard game, the Let's Build It, they're going to make one of those. So they've got all kinds of things. They've got, if you want to do hair and nails, you can do that. If you want to work on computers and design video games, you can do that. So check out the website, search Camp Discovery. Registration is open now. There's also another new program that will be starting in the fall. So typically, if you enroll and go to Polaris, full-time would be junior and senior year. They've started this new program that'll start next year, senior only. The goal is twofold. One, there is a, always a shortage of STNA, so people to work in nursing and hospital facilities, but also sometimes students need additional credits or credentials to graduate. So they're offering a new program. It's called Earn and Learn in partnership with O'Neill Healthcare. So as part of this program, students will receive their STNA, but also be paid while they're learning. So this is a fantastic opportunity for anyone who's going to be a senior next year who wants to get paid while they learn and earn credentials and credit. So again, you can search Earn and Learn on the Polaris website and enroll for that. And I think that might be it.
That's very busy. I talked to Diane a little bit last night about the STNA program, and she was just so excited about it. I can't wait to see how successful that is. Thank you. Next, report on legislation.
Speaking of very busy, the report on legislation is very busy, and I'm just going to try to do some highlights. Under the heading of House Activity, House Bill twenty-eight was introduced, and it passed the House with a vote of sixty-two to twenty-nine. The bill would eliminate the authority of political subdivisions, which is, one of those subdivisions are school districts, to have levy replacement property tax levies, beginning with the elections after October first, twenty twenty-five, which would then remove another tool from the school districts for that funding conversation. In addition, the House Judiciary Committee held a second hearing on HB seventy-nine. The bill would assault, would increase the penalties for assault if the victim were acting as a sport official, or the assault were committed in retaliation for the victim's actions as a sport official, which again is just very fancy legal language for when, and it happens in Strongsville, it happens throughout when you're at different high school events. If the call doesn't go the way a certain person likes, you know, sometimes it gets out of hand. So this is addressing that in one way or the other. And then House Bill one forty-five, which is sponsored by Representative Byrd, would increase the minimum number of school hours by twenty-seven for part-time kindergarten and fifty-three hours for all-day kindergarten through twelfth grade. So depending on where that goes, we may be updating our calendar again. If we thought starting school two days early was good, this will be even better. And then I do want to highlight that the majority of the work going on in Columbus right now is for the House budget bill. The House Leadership and the House Finance Committee are currently reviewing approximately three thousand amendments to that budget, and each one has to have at least one of the ninety-nine reps sponsoring it. But there are over three thousand amendments that the committee needs to work through. Their schedule is that the substitute bill is expected to be introduced on April first. They will then accept any other additional amendments, and they would like to be able to finish the House portion of it in the committee by April eighth, and then a floor vote by April ninth. So there's a lot to do in the next couple of weeks, and then, so that the public understands, once that's done, the House bill goes to the Senate, so they can do it all over again. But hopefully, three thousand amendments won't show up in the Senate. And then the last thing I just wanted to update on is, as everyone knows, property tax is in the news, and the legislature have a bunch of different efforts to address it. Some of them are HB one eighty-six, which would establish a revenue cap for districts on the twenty-mil floor based on inflation. We are not currently one of those districts, but this bill would impact approximately four hundred school districts as of now. And then HB one twenty-nine includes emergency substitute and income tax levies in that twenty-mil floor calculation. George and I talk about the inside baseball of all these different twists and turns, but this is one of those. And again, right now, it does not affect Strongsville, but it does affect over two hundred districts in the state. Another one being considered is sent Bill sixty-six. It is similar to HB one twenty-nine as far as the twenty-mil floor calculation, but it includes inside millage in the twenty-mil floor calculation. House Bill twenty-eight increases replacement, eliminates replacement property tax levy authority, which I already discussed. And then the one that I think resonates is House Bill sixty-one, which was introduced by Reps. Thomas and Daniels, and it expands the homestead exemption with school districts covering half the cost. It replaces the two-point-five percent owner occupancy rollback with a flat seven hundred and fifty-dollar credit, and it's indexed to inflation. And again, it expects the school districts to reimburse half of the cost. And I think all of these is one way that the legislature is trying to grapple with. On the one hand, property taxes are increasing, and they're increasing rapidly and to great amounts, which is a burden or can be a burden on taxpayers. On the other hand, the entities that get that money, which in our case is Strongsville City School District, our expenses are also increasing because of inflation, and trying to deal with that imbalance is the sticky wicket, as they say. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, Rich. The only thing I wanted to add, I saw on social media today that if you would like to talk to or hear from one of our state representatives, Mike DeVilla will be at the Strongsville Library this Saturday, March twenty-ninth, from nine AM to eleven AM. All right, next on our agenda is our liaison reports. City Council. I was able to attend last week's city council meeting. It was on March seventeenth. I think it lasted about fifteen minutes. They really, they only had a few ordinances to touch on. The only one I really wanted to point out is their buildings are also aging. They approved a ordinance to authorize repairs to their buildings totaling about seven-point-five million dollars. So it's not just us. It is our city that we are living in. It's a great city, but we need to keep investing in it. And that concludes my report. Strongsville Education Foundation, Sharon and Haley are not here. Just want to thank them again for continuing to support our kids through their grants. I know they're busy working on scholarships as well for graduating seniors. So thank you to them. PTA Council, Michelle?
Yes, the last meeting took place here on March sixth at nine-thirty. There are a couple of things of note. We always have a guest speaker come, so this month was Sean Collins from the high school, and he talked about the pre-apprenticeship program called Strong Start, and it's my understanding that we have someone piloting it now, but it hopes that we will get it rolling next year. And again, this is part of our hard look into how do we prep our kids for careers. So we'll have four areas as a part of that: finance, health science, hospitality, and tourism, and information technology. And this will run from grade six to twelve at some point, and students will be able to accumulate points towards graduation.
I believe seal.
Seals. So that is coming soon. So be on the lookout for that. I'm really excited to see what happens there. There was, I haven't heard an update yet, but there was on March twenty-first, first, the Spring Social for Council PTA. That is a fundraiser for them. They changed it up. It had been a dance previously, but there were some attendance issues there. So they swapped it out to like a March Madness theme, and they had sports, and they also had some dancing. And I believe, it went. It happened, which in the past have been cancellations. So I have to make the assumption that it went well. So we will bring a full report on that next month. And then just two dates to be aware of, if you have a fifth grader or an eighth grader. The DARE program is doing their, like concluding banquet party type thing a little bit differently this year. They will be held at the ice rink here in Strongsville. Fifth grade will be in the evening on May second, and eighth grade will be in the evening on May ninth. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we have Southwest General Hospital. We have not had a meeting yet, but we do have one coming up at the beginning of April, so we will be able to give a report next month. Board Committee reports. Finance Committee, Michelle?
We did have a meeting on March fifth here in this room, and George was so kind to invite Nick Fakari from Meter, who's one of our investment partners, to come and talk about our investments. So a couple takeaways from that for me. One was I was reminded of how limited we are in our options. The law dictates what we can and cannot do. And so people want us to do more sometimes, and we just can't. And the second takeaway is I know that George is considering how we invest right now, specifically as we are expecting to spend down some of our savings, where we typically maybe would have had more money in longer-term investments. Because we don't know exactly how much we're going to need at every moment, we kind of have to adjust a little bit and put some more things in short term. So George has a tab on that. I'm sure he'll keep us updated as necessary. But it was really nice to have Nick here to answer any questions and to really dive deep into how all of that works so that the committee can understand better. So thanks, Rich.
Michelle, it wasn't planned on getting into this, but circling back to the financial report, just for the public to kind of visualize what you were just saying. For the financial report, if you go to the monthly status report, and then in one of the appendices, we have two portfolios with Meter, one for the operations funds and one for the oh-seven-oh funds. And what was, Michelle was saying, we had, we can go up to five years, and we ladder investments into the one-to-five-year spaces. The longer you go out, the better interest rate you get. But as we're starting to spend down, we're starting to limit how far we go out. So once we reinvest, we're looking at that one-to-three-year space versus that four-to-five-year space, because we're looking by month when we would start needing that cash. So this is a monthly report they sign. So if someone's interested in it, they can go to this monthly report that's included in the financial status to kind of see where, what bucket we have those invested funds in.
Thank you, George. I was much more eloquent.
Oh, you did good. Nice job.
Thank you. You might as well keep on going. Policy Committee?
I don't have anything to say about that one, but we do have a meeting coming up on April twenty-third at one-thirty here in this room, and those are open meetings. So please come join us for the fun.
Thank you. Facilities Committee. Want to go, Richard? Do you want me to?
I think we just need to thank our Facility Committee representatives, Mike Caldwell, for joining us at our meeting. And is there a date for the next meeting?
We do.
May twentieth at six-thirty in this building. And as Michelle pointed out, these are public meetings, so please feel free to join us.
Thank you. Business Advisory Committee, they do not have a meeting. It is to be announced. All right, next, we have the Adoption of Consent Calendar. Action by the Board of Education and Adoption of Consent Calendar at this point of the agenda means that all items appearing in this agenda denoted as type-action consent, which items constitute the consent calendar are adopted by one single motion unless a member of the Board or Superintendent requests that such items be removed from the consent calendar and voted upon separately. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bissell, second by Mr. Miko. Does anyone have anything they need removed from the consent calendar? Hearing none. George, can you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Howson?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Reiva for his superintendent's information.
Thanks so much. Before I get to the slides and the timely information, we had a couple exciting events in addition to the Model Mustang experience this week. So, you know, we are blessed with so many wonderful teachers in our district, and two of our outstanding teachers were recognized. And so I'm going to have Jenny start with one of the recognitions she was able to attend at the high school for one of our teachers there.
Yeah, so it was exciting. The Cavs came and awarded Kevin Kline with the award of Head of the Class. And so what's so cool about this one is that a student nominated him, a former student that he had, I think, last year. And the student also gets a scholarship through the Cavs, and then Mr. Kline is going to be treated to a VIP experience at one of the games. And I think they're going to do probably a news piece on it as well. So he was very surprised. And I think what stood out to me the most is just the bond and the relationship that Mr. Kline is able to build with students. He talked about this student, people telling the student that he shouldn't go on and take his class, that he probably couldn't do it. And the student persevered, and I don't want to share publicly what he got on the ACT, but Mr. Kline did in front of his class. And it's just amazing how much the student achieved, you know, obviously with Mr. Kline as his teacher, but just on his own, continuing to persevere in spite maybe what people were saying to him. And just the, what he wrote about Mr. Kline and all of it, it just was really touching. And so the Cavs came out and gave some Cavs swag bags to all of Mr. Kline's class and obviously to the student Mr. Kline. So just congratulations to him. It was a surprise and quite an honor. Well-deserved, well-deserved recognition.
And so, I mean, as you said, the recognition was well-deserved, and having a student nominate you, that's the heart of it. But he also gets a Cavs VIP experience at one of the games, which is a nice added bonus. So I think there's a suite in there that he gets to take part in.
And more surprises that will be announced later, so we're not even sure what those are.
And then on Wednesday, Jenny and I both had the opportunity to go to the middle school for a surprise recognition of another teacher. So Mr. Tolone shared with the entire staff that they needed to have a quick staff meeting after school, got everybody into the auditorium, and to recognize that the Ohio Senate has chosen an Educator of the Year for Strongsville City Schools, and that person was John Lepowski, who is one of our sixth-grade teachers and a sixth-grade science teacher at the middle school. And so his wife was there. He was extremely humbled to have that honor. Most educators do it for a variety of reasons, and public recognition is not one of them. So he was very humbled and appreciative and thankful for the entire team that supports the work that they do. And like Jenny said with Kevin, the common theme is relationships, right? The content is important. John's a great science teacher. He does all the things we would want a science teacher to do, but he creates meaningful relationships with kids. He opens up, oh, he opens up his classroom for kids on his team, outside of his team, that may not want to go to the lunchroom. And I think he calls it Lip's Diner.
Yeah.
And they have specific rules about they have to clean up. They can behave a certain way, and they could be, have entrance into the diner. But that's kind of one of those things that goes, it's not publicized, but to have a space, and I've been in there where he's had kids in there for lunch, and it's just a great space for the kids to be themselves, hang out. And John teaches them great skills to do that. So two great teachers in the classroom, but two great human beings that are developing meaningful relationships that make lasting impressions on kids. So congratulations to both of them. So a few things around the district. We'll start at the elementary school. I believe all of our elementary schools participated in the Kids Heart Challenge through the American Heart Association. So throughout February, whether it was being heart-healthy, hands-on, learning about hands-on CPR, learning about different exercises, or the importance of heart-healthy food or jump rope, kids took part in a variety of activities to learn healthy lifelong habits, as well as fundraising opportunities to raise money for the American Heart Association. And our elementary schools raised a little over thirty-four thousand dollars, which is amazing. And the top fundraisers were Kinzner Elementary School with about twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. And because of that, they'll be receiving a thousand dollars from the Heart Association to be used in their PE department. So just the fundraising to go to a great cause is awesome and gives kids a service opportunity, and the importance of giving back to a bigger cause, as well as learning some important skills about how to take care of yourself at a young age and make, develop healthy habits. Going on to the middle school, who doesn't love their time about learning about the periodic table? So one of the things is, if you wandered around. is, if you wandered around, I, I was at one of the, one of the tables, and they were sharing their science experiments and what they do with these experiments, so that they learn Newton's first law of motion and learn about, you know, chemical reactions. And so, what our teachers at the, in seventh grade science are doing are creating multiple ways for kids to, uh, learn, uh, the periodic table versus having to do what I did when I was a kid and memorizing it, wrote, you know, section by section. So, a variety of ways that they're doing is, is they are studying it, um, learning about, uh, how to spell their name with different elements. So, at the bottom right-hand corner, you could see Lauren was able to spell her name with, uh, a variety of, uh, different elements that were there. Uh, so, you could see uranium and nitrogen. Uh, the other ones, uh, I'm not even gonna try to say what they are. Uh, but, uh, that, that's a cute activity to try and get the kids to, uh, learn the different elements by their name. Uh, they created superheroes based on the elements. They researched, um, them dealing with their qualities and put them on the six-sided cubes that they developed. They observed, uh, how they interacted and how properties changed before, uh, when they became compounds. And they also did more experiments to watch how elements and compounds react when combined to, combined together. So, taking a look at, uh, let's learn the metals in the periodic table, the non-metals, the gases, you know, versus here's five different ways to experience the periodic table. Um, I'm sure our kids came through with a, a better understanding and knowledge because of the work of the seventh-grade science team at the middle school. And finally, at the high school, um, and, uh, some of this was on display, if you were at the Model Mustang yesterday, experienced yesterday. So, French Three students, uh, they were in, engaged in a, in a art pro, uh, part, Project d'Art, I guess is how you would, uh, say it there. Uh, so, one of the things that they did is, and I love this, right? It's about multiple modalities to learn content and experiences. Um, and so, they were able to learn about a French art movement that had a historical significance. Not only did they just learn about it, but they had to create an original painting inspired by the art movement that they studied. And then, they had to present it to others. So, Jenny's the expert over here on deeper learning. I'm sure that checks a lot of boxes for what we want our kids to do, uh, in deeper learning in our classrooms. And then, French Three honors students. Again, uh, there's a lot of vocabulary that goes along with, uh, learning a world language. Um, and you could see whether it was crime, politics, disaster, sports, or entertainment, uh, they had to learn a variety of vocabulary. So, instead of going through, uh, the variety of traditional aspects to apply that vocabulary, the kids used green screen technology, developed newscasts and, and news reports under those topics to develop their vocabulary, um, and also applying their elements of grammar that they've learned throughout, uh, the years. So, uh, just outstanding opportunities, um, to, uh, apply their knowledge. Finally, um, the last thing, uh, I think, as we all know, uh, so, Friday is the last day of school. Next week, we are off for spring break. So, if you're staying local, if you're traveling, be safe, have fun, enjoy warmer weather or colder weather if you're sticking around here. But enjoy the time with family and friends and, uh, get rested before we come to our hard-to-believe final two months of the school year. And that's the timely information for this month.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have third reading. First and second readings were waived. Be it resolved that the Strongsville City School Board of Education approves the listed policy. Do I have a motion?
So, moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bissell, second by Mr. Miko. If you remember, this was a policy we talked about our last meeting, um, leaving our cash bo, balance policy alone. But we added that, uh, first paragraph in there. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none. George, can you take the roll?
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housen?
Yes. Motion carries. Uh, next, under Board of Education, other, um, we have listed future levy and bond issue a discussion, but we are gonna table that and wait until, um, Sharon and Haley are with us to have that discussion. Second, we have the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce Model Policies and Procedures. Be it resolved that the Strongsville City School Board of Education approves the resolution contained in the exhibit to comply with Senate Bill twenty-nine. This resolution rescinds and replaces the previously approved Resolution twenty-five dash oh-two dash forty-five. Do I have a motion?
So, moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bissell, second by Mr. Miko. Dr. Reba, can you refresh my memory why we are rescinding and revoting?
So, we recently approved, uh, a resolution saying that we are gonna use the department's twenty-twenty-four model policies. After that, we, we have a company, Neola, that develops these things. After it was developed, uh, the Department of Education came out and said, hey, there's certain things in the model policies that conflict with existing state and federal laws and applicable case laws. So, we need to remove those. So, this, uh, new resolution, uh, takes out those things that conflict, uh, with, that, that are in the two thousand twenty-four model policies and make sure we're, uh, where we need to be with this resolution to upload to the state.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
How will it impact our, our families?
I believe, and spe, I'd have to remember, 'cause we talked about this last time. But in speaking with Andy, um, these are the procedures and the policies we follow. Um, it's, it's more of a endorsement that this is what the, it's, it's a new requirement that says we have to publicly have a resolution that says we are gonna follow them and then upload it to the state. So, it's more of a procedural requirement versus a change in practice.
Any other questions? Hearing none. George, can you take the roll?
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housen?
Yes. Motion carries. Next, under Board of Education, others miscellaneous. Do we have any miscellaneous? I just wanna say that I was able to attend the high school play back to the eighties last weekend. And that, it was phenomenal. The kids, they looked like they were having a great time. They did a great time. And I just wanna give Mr. Jenkins a shout-out that, you know, we really appreciate all that he does for our theater kids. Any other?
It had to do with the music.
I really did love the music.
Hearing none, we will...
I got one more.
Okay.
Maybe two.
Okay.
Um, just wishing safe travels and fun trip to our high school band and orchestra students who are currently en route and just ate dinner, in case you're wondering, uh, to Florida to enjoy, uh, Disney and to perform there and, and to do some learning there. So, I'm looking forward to hearing about that. And then, congratulations to our middle school chamber students who performed, uh, in the lobby at the Cavs game tonight before to provide some entertainment. So, um, what a great opportunity for our students. And thank you to those teachers who are going above and beyond to organize those kinds of events.
Thank you. Next is meeting notification. A regular Board of Education meeting work session will be held Thursday, April tenth, twenty-twenty-five at six fifteen, starting at six fifteen for executive session, followed by public session at approximately seven PM in the meeting room of the Administration Building here, one-eight-one-nine-nine, Cook Avenue. And then, after that, a regular Board of Education meeting will be held Thursday, April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, starting with executive session at six fifteen PM, followed by public session at approximately seven PM here in this room of the Administration Building, one-eight-one-nine-nine, Cook Avenue, Strongsville, Ohio. Next, we do have need to return to executive session to...
Consider the employment of a public employee.
Do I have a motion? So, moved. Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bissell, second by Mr. Miko. George, can you take the roll?
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Housen?
Yes. Motion passes. We will enter into executive session at approximately eight-twenty. We do not see any need to continue in public. So, I wanna wish everybody a good night and a happy spring break.